Progress.
We'll call this meeting to order and we'll pass it to Clementine for roll call vote and then announcements for how the public can participate in the meeting.
So not a vote, I'll just find out who's here. I believe Councilmember Barber is not joining us today. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And so for those attending in person, wearing a mask is recommended. Please keep your phones and devices in the chamber muted to prevent audio interference. And there are two ways to virtually participate in today's meeting. You may join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call in. To join the meeting on the, on Zoom, on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. An up-to-date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free eight three three five six eight 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 six four, then enter a meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak and will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit established for the meeting and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, this timer is accurate with no delay. And the meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast Channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay, and we look forward to receiving your public comment.
Thank you Clementine. And with that, we'll go ahead and go to public comments, and this is for items not on today's agenda. So if anybody wishes to speak, please go and step to the mic and you have your three minutes. Oh, I apologize. I skipped over that. Second here. One second here. So yeah, so we'll do recognition of July as being Parks and Recreation Month and receive an update on programs. So we're going to hold off on public comments. I apologize. I like your shirt though. I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. July is Parks and Recreation Month, and as it's always the case, we want to use this opportunity to highlight the good work that several authority departments are doing when we have months dedicated to them. I think last month we had the Public Works Month. This year, this month is now Parks and Recreation, and with that, our Parks and Recreation Director Karen Larson will have a short presentation.
Should we wait for Mayor Williamson to come back? Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Williamson and council members. Thank you for recognizing July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month for the City of Monterey. We celebrate Parks and Recreation Month to acknowledge the important role Parks and Recreation plays in the public health and well-being, conservation, and social equity. This year's theme is where community grows and celebrates the vital part that Parks and Recreation professionals play in bringing people together, providing crucial services and fostering growth in our community. The proclamation today recognizes several efforts of Parks and Recreation, including the importance of access to local parks, recreation, trails, open spaces, and facilities for all citizens. The services that Parks and Recreation professionals provide are essential for our community, from protecting open space and natural resources to helping fight obesity, to providing activities and resources for all people. So July is the perfect time to learn about our Parks and Recreation Department. The City of Monterey's Parks and Recreation Department consists of three divisions, the Monterey Sports Center, Parks Operations, and Recreation. The Monterey Sports Center is a 75,000 square foot facility buzzing with activity with 1,000 to 2,000 visitors a day. Amenities include two heated indoor swimming pools, three cross-court gymnasium, cardio, strength, stretching, and functional training areas, indoor cycling studio, group exercise studio, saunas, sun deck, and multiple locker rooms. The community has used the facility in a self-paced manner by swimming laps, playing basketball, volleyball, pickleball, foot salt, ping pong, or badminton, lifting weights, or using cardio and functional strength equipment, or take advantage of the multitude of programming options, including more than 60 group exercise classes, swimming lessons, martial arts, wrestling, sports leagues, wellness seminars, personal training, and so much more. So we're so excited that the Monterey Sports Center continues to rebound, and we're gradually reinstating hours of operation, services, and programs. During Parks and Recreation Month, it's also important to remember that parks are at the center of so many of our experiences and memories, moments that Parks and Recreation professionals provide. Our 37 local parks are often our first experience to nature or our introduction to a favorite hobby or physical activity. They're places to gather with friends and family, or attend a special event, spaces to celebrate life's special moments, spots of respite and healing, sites that connect us with essential community services, and so much more. The City of Parks Operations Division entails not only maintenance functions for parks, beaches, forests, and open spaces, but also provides essential services at Veterans Memorial Park Campground and a cemetery called Cemetery L. Enseau. The Recreation Division consists of four community centers, field sports, summer camps and programs, and special events such as the annual Fourth of July Celebration, Halloween Trunk or Treat, or the Bunny Hop Photo Op. Local Parks and Recreation facilities were vital throughout COVID-19, with so many people discovering a new appreciation for the essential spaces at community centers and the important services they provide. From blood drives and food distribution to preschool and summer camps, special events and field sports, the Recreation Division delivers provisions and programs that mean so much to the community. So that was the brief overview of the department, but before we conclude, just a quick glimpse into how our summer's been going so far. At the Monterey Sports Center, most of our swimming lessons are full with a waiting list, and we've already offered thousands of swimming lessons and on track to have our largest sports camp ever with over 1,000 campers. In the Recreation Division, the attendance continues to grow at Camp Kinsalbe Overnight Camp, Whispering Pines Day Camp, three playground sites with Casanova Knoll, Hilltop, and Villa Parizo. And so far, we've had 600 children who participated, and we still have a couple weeks to go. In addition, many of our specialty camps such as beach volleyball, international soccer, flag football, woodworking, Lego engineering, and tiny tots camps are also full with a waiting list. And coming soon, we're gearing up for fun programs and events at Casanova Knoll Park Center, Montecito, and Laguna Grande Parks with Kids Night Out or Parents Getaway, special events such as movie nights or holiday-themed events, preschool age programs, cert training, neighborhood meetings, bookmobile visits, and much more. You tell us one of our favorite phrases that we say in recreation is much more. We say that in our, we say that in our department a lot. In conclusion, I'd like to extend our sincere appreciation for the leadership of the City Council, the advocacy of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the entire city staff, as well as the love and support of our community. And most importantly, I'd also like to honor and thank our Parks and Recreation professionals that work diligently all year round. Without you, the opportunity to grow a community would not happen. So if you stand up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all for the amazing work that you do. I appreciate it, and I think on behalf of our entire community, it's very much appreciated. And I think an example of that was our previous council meeting when folks came in and had this room packed in regards to the acknowledgement of the importance of our sports center. So it's just one example. I go around town all the time and I hear people talking about how much they love Camp Kian Sabe and all the other programs that you all do. So it's probably underappreciated. So I want to give you all a huge thank you for what you all do.
Awesome and more.
Thank you for everything you do. Awesome.
Perfect. Alrighty. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Does everyone want to come up? Let's take a group shot.
Yeah.
We will. I like it. Gosh.
Did you see me?
All right. And with that, we will go to public comments for items that are not on this, this afternoon's agenda or this evening's agenda.
Good afternoon, City Council. Steve Lightfoot here. I'm the guy with the John Lennon murder expose. Lately, I've been seeing some Pentagon, FBI, CIA out-of-towner types with grim faces walking by my van. And I want to say right now, and this is very important, anyone allied against me and my message, a curse on you. Ask Santa Barbara how important that was. I want to read something right now. If I were to construct a billboard today, it would read, saving evil apathetic all of you. I know that most of Monterey and Santa Cruz residents know I'm absolutely correct in my claims that Stephen King murdered Lennon in a sick government plot involving Presidents Nixon and Reagan. They divert their eyes when they walk by my display of matching photographs from my van's window. They know it's King, not Chapman. They knew Chapman was alive then. When it happened, when he was never even tried. They have accepted this evil as part of life, their wretched life, not mine. I have chosen celibacy since the mid 90s, people. I'm so sincere about knowing how untouchable you are in your present depraved, terrorized state. I can't get next to that, and I couldn't be more sincere if you don't think so. I'm glad I enjoyed that part of life when the world was good and I was young at least. I'm sure if your jealousy and fear of government doesn't get me killed first, that I'll have the best sex life a man can have after having saved an entire species from itself, from evil, from the Lennon murder cover-up. I consider you the public like a beautiful statue I found on the beach, only it's covered with layers and layers of crud and gook and barnacles, symbolic of the media brainwash campaign, the terrorism involved in killing our hero on his doorstep, the replacement of Lennon with King, the swapping of good for evil, all that gook. I have spent 40-plus years washing your crud and gook off of you because I know a beautiful object exists underneath. You don't think so, but I know so. You're all just, all temporarily sick in your hearts and your heads, and all because Stephen King has been laughing at you and humiliating you all this time as he scoops, as you scoop up his poop of a message of books and movies. He rules over you warped, evil fools as you listen to second-rate music. Admit it, people. Until King is exposed, arrested, tried, and that's right, executed, you're all sick, stuck on stupid. Stupidity on steroids, in fact. It's important we execute him to make an example of him and humiliate not only him, but his handlers, the most evil people in the world who run our lives. The secret society bunch of bastards who control every aspect of our lives. Anything less would be inviting King with all his money to have me killed while he is in jail. No, no. If I am to be killed, he must never be alive to enjoy that. We have to kill Stephen King because what he did is as grievous and sinister and treacherous a crime as can be committed in our world.
So stop making threats, please. Let's.
John Lennon was the best person on earth, and we all needed his message.
That is time. Appreciate you. Anybody else want to speak during public comment in the chamber?
Turner Stewart. I was at the last city council meeting, and I think I was, I was interested in something about history. That's my main interest in Monterey, making history access more accessible. But in your presentation, and I was really quite surprised at how it seems to have been concluded so early. I thought it was going to take until December for you to put together the affordable housing component. But one of the things you mentioned was that one of the constraints was that the city doesn't have any more water credits available. And I just, it just occurred to me that the city, all of the current houses in Monterey do have water credits. And I think, well, I shouldn't say a lot of houses are empty, but I read recently in one of the national magazines that there were cities in Europe that were actually leveling instigate, doing assessments on unused property as a way of accumulating money that could then be used for finding housing for people. And it just occurred to me that you all, you already have a rehabilitation program that helps people rehab their, rehab their houses if they're interested, but I thought it just, I just thought if there was an assessment on a property, say, and I think it's public record how large the properties are, of over, say, 2,000 square feet, there might be an assessment for those, for, for any property, any house that was larger than that, and except if there was housing provided. In other words, if there was a rental unit of any sort in their house. And I, is my, oh, I see. I do have some time. If there was a rental in their house and they could have some help from the city about providing that. I have been providing rental for two tenants at my house for the last 25 years, a lot of different people, probably 30 or 40 people over that period of time. And I found it very rewarding, and I just think it might be, there was so much about how friend, how caring the city was, and I thought that this would be a way of showing the city's care for the people who are already here. And I'm going to come again at seven. Thank you.
It may be good to connect with staff. I don't know what the opportunities are to update the program as you indicated, but we're always open to ideas, so maybe anybody else in the chamber?
My mic is off, of course. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on, during public comment? All right, we'll go online, please.
Okay, we just had Dan go up. This is going to call on Claire First.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Claire First. I'm a Monterey resident, a longtime teacher, and I have a one-year-old son. We just learned mid-June that my son's school, Catalyst Kids, it's on the Presidio, is closing mid-August, and that Catalyst is no longer renewing their contract in that location, which only gives us two months to find alternative care. And this is an area with very extremely limited offerings for childcare. In fact, centers have long wait lists. It's nearly impossible to get in. As someone who works with children and has a small child, finding quality care is really important to me and our family. And I know for many families in this area, the availability, the availability of childcare, especially if you have a child under the age of two or three, is super limited. And right off the bat, when they told us this school is closing, we're instantly disqualified from most of the care facilities in the area just because of his age. And having access to good childcare is the only way that I myself was able to go back to work and, you know, be a teacher, be in my own classroom, and it's unfortunately may impact my ability to return this year, which is a bummer. I love teaching in this area. Post-pandemic, there's a major hit to education. You know, it's a strained industry already. And in this area, the cost of living is quite high, and childcare costs can sometimes be equivalent to rent, which is pretty wild, and it's no surprise that many families are moving away. And we know that supporting young families is essential to a healthy local economy, and our family really wants to stay and continue to work and live in this area. I really want to ask the city, and I think it's Janet Aldretti, who manages the city properties, to do whatever they can to work with whatever military we see to find a way to keep that center open or find another agency to take over. They have such an amazing staff. The quality is unmatched. They're very dedicated to the kids in the community. And I want, I just really want the, I just want to ask the city, like, please prioritize this. And we need to find a way to not just keep the center running, but to have childcare in this area growing, so local families that are desperate in need of childcare have it. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Mayor, there are no further hands raised.
Okay, and just on that last public comment, you can email info@monterey. What is the email?
It's suggest@monterey.org.
Thank you. Suggest. Okay. And I don't know where the possibilities are, but staff can be sure to get back to you in regards to what opportunities there might be. All right, with that, we will go ahead and go to the consent agenda. We're going to pull item number eight. Anything else on the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you pull item 15.
Okay, we'll pull item eight and 15. Anything else? All right, let's take, oh, is the, well, let's take out to the public. Anybody want to pull anything in the chamber? How about online? Do we have anybody that wants to pull anything?
No hands are raised.
Okay, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve of all items on the consent with the exception of item number eight and number 15.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do I have to go back out to public comment? I don't know why I'm struggling with this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and go. Right, motion passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and go to item number eight. Which is the. Authorizing the the city manager to enter into an agreement with the. Federal Highway Administration to accept safe streets and roads for all action planning grants funds. Pass it to Hans.
Yeah, we, uh, Marissa will give us a brief presentation and then uh we hope Councilor Garcia has a few questions.
Hello, Mayor Williamson and council members. The item before council today is the authorization to sign an agreement with the Federal Highway Administration. As well as add this project to the CIP list and appropriate the matching funds for Measure X. If council approves the resolution tonight, it will give the city manager the authorization to sign this agreement. Once the agreement is executed, we can advertise a request for proposals. For um qualified consultants to develop a local road safety plan. This is federally funded um through a competitive grant program called the Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Planning Grant. Um, so we were very lucky to receive a grant in the first cycle of this program. Um, this is a plan that's a continuation of our past Vision Zero efforts, including the twenty seventeen. Also uh funded by a grant through the Office of Traffic Safety, um Vision Zero Plan, which we adopted in twenty seventeen. The local road safety plan will provide a framework for the city for identifying, analyzing. And prioritizing local uh local road and safety improvement projects for all of our roads in Monterey. Um, the local road safety plan is also an effort um where we're showing how we are stretching our Measure X dollars by going after competitive grant. Programs in order to maximize the benefit of Measure X for all of the citizens of Monterey County. Um, and also this local road safety plan is very critical in us maintaining eligibility for safety programs such as the Highway Safety Improvement Program. And we currently have a project at Del Monte and Casa Verde, which is funded through that um that funding program. So. Thank you.
Can I ask what the project is, the Del Monte and Casa Verde?
It's the Intersection Improvement Project, and that's for us to realign the trail and um do signalized improvements and ADA uh curb ramp improvements.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Statements? Uh, let's go out to public comment and we can come back to statements. Um, thank you for the presentation. Any comments in the chamber? Any public comment? All right, do we have any public comments online?
No.
Okay, and we'll take it back to Councilwoman Garcia.
Awesome. Thank you, Marissa, and uh. Uh, I, this is uh, I I requested to have this item pulled just um uh more of an acknowledgement for the great work that our Department of Public Works does in going after. Um, these uh grants, um, I think it's a great opportunity and um. You know, it's, it's very exciting to know that this kind of uh planning work will be coming to our city. Um, in an effort to identify uh risky areas throughout the city and and identifying solutions. Um, that hopefully will make it a a little bit uh more safe for pedestrians and bicyclists uh throughout the whole city. So. Uh, thank you so much for the, for the, for the work.
Here, here. Well said. Any other comments? Okay, uh, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then we're gonna go to item fifteen. Which is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter on behalf of the city opposing AB five zero four. Which is a legislation by Reyes, proposed legislation would create a system where nearly any city employee can sympathy strike regardless of their job duties.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think Brett, uh Neil, our HR director is here to provide you with a brief uh overview why we think. Uh, AB four oh four, five oh four is uh is the wrong legislation at the wrong time.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, we're asking that the council approves a mayor to sign a letter opposing AB five oh four. Uh, this bill um makes it to where nearly any city employee can strike or sympathy strike whether it's a primary strike. Excuse me, and so there's a concern that having the employees have the ability to do this right could result in a halt. Of critical services, citywide services. In addition, uh, the bill jeopardizes um and can undermine the collective bargaining process. This bill is also opposed by the uh California League of, excuse me, the League of California Cities. And so it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if you have questions. Um, okay. Comments?
And questions? All right, let's take it out to public comment. Anybody in the chamber?
Anybody in the chamber? And do we have anybody online?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation.
Yeah, this is just something that I can't support. Um, I do believe people have a right to engage in um labor actions and um. I don't believe that people should be compelled to cross picket lines. For example, I personally would not cross a picket line and I, and I never have, and I wouldn't want. Our employees to be compelled to do so. So I just note that um. Our Senator Laird and Caballero and our Assemblymember Rivas and Addis all supported this. So I can't support it, but I do understand why staff's bringing it to us.
Any other comment in the council?
Uh, yeah, just a quick comment. I can appreciate your position, Mr. Hafa. I would, uh, I'm gonna support this because I think it's important that uh. You know, we, we preserve the ability for essential services to be um continuing to be driven. We also are not taking away the, the right of a labor group uh other than police or fire. Uh, to strike themselves. So I think it's a distinction between. Those that are in a represented group that may get to a a crossroad in labor that would choose to strike versus of the sympathy strike. So. For that reason, I just think uh the rights are still preserved for those that would need to strike. However, I think that balance that with the city and counties that still need the uh ability to be able to provide essential services across uh our communities.
Okay. Councilor Garcia, do you have any? Um, I, I, I stand with uh Councilor Hafa on this. I think it's important for us to allow. We, we have to support our, our unions. Um. One of this, if you look at statistics in regards to what's happening to unions across this country over the last several decades. They're dwindling and they're losing support. But unions provide a critical role in society to make sure that there's a healthy balance um between management and the workforce. And um, I think it's important for us to allow. Um, a, a bargaining group within the city of Monterey to stand in solidarity with um their, their colleagues in the city. Um, if, if there's an issue important enough to, to compel them to do so, and they have that, that opportunity. So. Um, I'm not support, I'm not in support of, of signing the letter and will, will not be supporting um, be supporting this. So.
I have a question to the city attorney if I could.
Absolutely.
Some time. Um, a question I have in the legislation uh for the city attorney. Um, and maybe the city manager can weigh in this as well. Under the um. Proposed AB five oh four. Uh, the, I have not read the text, but it makes the reference of uh. The uh. See, let me catch, catch my eyes here to where I was reading it. Um. That. The employee would have the opportunity uh to be sympathetic to a union that was protesting. Uh, regardless of their cla- their job classification. Um, so what impact does this have on um a particular labor group that may be essential services like police or fire? So if there was a strike that uh. A particular labor group uh within the city uh was striking, there was a picket line. Uh, where does that leave police and fire?
Excluded.
Currently, under our city charter, the po-police and fire are prohibited from participating in strikes. Um, and this proposed legislation also exempts um. Police elsewhere in the law, fire are already exempt from, from this, so they would not be permitted to strike. We do have, um, our human resources director brought to my attention, we do have a city code section that currently prohibits um strikes. So if this law were to pass, then for example, if the Management Employees Association went on strike. Jem could, members of Jem could um participate with them in sympathy for, for that strike. And so um. I, I presume the workforce would be lessened for, by those that are engaging in it.
Yeah, so essentially if a um. A labor unit within the city chose to strike. And they exerted their, their uh statutory right. And all other labor groups other than police and fire. They could join in the sympathy strike. Walk away from work. And. Completely shut the city down. So essentially, the only two working groups could be police and fire. All other city employment would cease. During that strike. So for those reasons, I can't support it. I don't see the. I'll see the logic to allow it to get to such an extreme condition. Not interfering with the ability of the said union that has. The labor identified issue that does choose to strike. But to allow all other groups uh to join them and walk away from work doesn't make sense to me.
If I could just offer a potential scenario, and I, I kind of want to be a little bit careful, but. Let's say Jem decides to strike and. The management group decides to join in. I think that that message is a lot louder with management joining in, in support of Jem versus just Jem doing it by themselves. But if we don't even allow them that opportunity to do that, then we're silencing that voice and they're gonna be essentially standing by themselves. So I think it provides an opportunity um for them to display their, their ability to um. To stand in solidarity and, and to support. And I think it's on, on the agency uh to. To make sure that we're getting to the table and having that conversation to resolve that. So I think it gives us all the more reason to come to a solution.
Well, and I would agree that we want to seek the solution uh in meet and confer. And the Myers- Millie's Ground Act, Ground uh Brown Act is, is very clear that the solutions are had in uh meet and confer. Um, and to avoid strikes because obviously the, the loser in a strike is the community when services are not delivered. Um, it cre- it can create havoc and can create a tremendous amount of inefficiency. Um, if, if multiple associations, one being the principal that's leading the strike and all others are following with sympathy. Um, that puts a council in, in a predicament as policymakers um where we, we would be. Leveraged to at some point have to succumb because we've lost our labor group. I think the solution still remains in extensive labor negotiations and arbitration. And uh continuing to not walk away from your employer. But certainly, they have a right to strike. Uh, but I just don't agree that they would be able to have or should have the power to be able to completely bring uh city. Or a county uh to its knees. And, and completely shut it down and put a council in an awkward position where then we are um forced to settle because we've lost a workforce.
Can I ask a question of the staff? So uh, when a unit goes on strike, they're not being paid. If a, if, if a unit or an individual goes on a sympathy strike, would they continue to be paid or would they have to forego their salary? Do we know that? I think it's significant because I don't think people take, make these decisions lightly.
I don't know.
I didn't see any reference to the pay of the sympathy striker in terms of would they get paid or not. I would imagine they would not be paid if they're striking.
Yeah. They're walking.
That's what I would think too, and I, I just think that's an important bit of context because people don't generally make that decision. Unless they think things are pretty serious, especially doing it for another unit they're not a member of. So I just offer that as a little bit of context.
Okay, well, entertain a motion if there's uh interest in moving forward in that regard. Anybody?
Alan. I, I, I can make a motion that we uh not. If that starts the dialogue, I'll do that.
To not.
To not accept the staff's, or to accept the staff's recommendation. I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommendation and write a letter. Um, in support of the League of California Cities' position to not support.
Opposing.
AB five oh four.
All right, is there a second? All right, seeing none, the motion dies. Is there any interest in making any other type of motion? All right, so we're just gonna leave this one floundering. But I think it's clear where, where we stand on that. So um, thank you, staff, for, for bringing this forward. I think it provided a really good, healthy dialogue. All right, and with that, we will go to public hearing items, number sixteen, objective design standards for downtown and lighthouse specific plans, and we'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was an item we had on the agenda um four weeks ago. And uh, we just didn't get to it, and so Fernanda will be presenting what uh already the planning commission heard a couple of times, and hopefully you. Will agree with the recommendation by the planning commission. It's about housing. And it's about also bringing us in compliance with several of the state regulations.
Hi, Fernanda.
Hi.
It's always good seeing you.
Thanks.
You, seeing you always reminds me of my days on the Architecture Review Committee, so I just. Good to see you today.
The good days.
And it's a good, and it's a good uh staff report too, so I'm even more excited about it. So I'll pass it to you for the presentation.
Okay, thanks. Um, so today we are looking at downtown and lighthouse specific plans. And the bigger item in this is the objective design standards. There are other amendments um listed in the staff report. However, this presentation focuses on the objective design standards. So the purpose of the objective design standards, and I'll uh explain them, is to comply with Senate Bill thirty-five. Which is meant to expedite and facilitate housing construction by limiting the city's discretion over certain housing projects. So because the city of Monterey has not met its regional housing needs allocation for housing units. We have not been able to construct um as many as the state has mandated. Um, the state is saying that it's taking away. Our local discretionary review power of housing, of certain housing projects. And the only way that we can retain some design control of housing projects. Is to adopt what's called objective design standards. And the purpose of these standards is to be very clear um and give developers clear expectations of what we're looking for, of what we would like our. Buildings and their design to look like. And so the other. The goal here is to update our downtown and lighthouse specific plans to clarify the development and design expectations. But also um to try to retain what the original specific plans meant to do, which was to retain our community vision. Um, for what we want Monterey to look like. So the goal of objective design standards is that they involve no personal or subjective judgment. And so. As you'll see, um, the standards are either very numerical or specific. Um, they don't involve language that could be interpreted in one way or another. Because the goal is that when someone reads the standard, everyone will understand what they, what it means and what is required of the developer. Um. And so the work that staff did as well as the planning commission was we rewarded the design. M-most of the design guidelines that were already in this, in these specific plans. They, they were rewarded into objective language. And the, the way that our specific plans are outlined is we have um objectives. For what we want our development to look like, then standards and then guidelines. We kept all, if not most, of the standards such as building height. Setbacks, parking requirements, which are inherently objective. But we um again rewarded the guidelines into objective standards so that we could still keep the community vision. But we again rewarded the guidelines into objective standards so that we could still keep the community vision. And this is what are basically our standards look like. They're a checklist that when a developer proposes a qualified housing project, they would go through this checklist and tell us how their project meets each standard. And so on the right-hand column, there's a yes and no that they would check and tell us what page on their drawings. We can find that information to verify that they've met that standard. And for example, I'll read one of the standards, but projects on through lots and on a corner shall provide a building face to both streets, meaning you need to provide a door or a window if it's on a corner. So like, that's very specific guy, guidance to developers. And we had four planning commission meetings because it was a lot to get through. We ended up forming a subcommittee with myself and the planning commissions to architects. Because the standards were so, there were so many and we received lots of public comments and we wanted to make sure that we addressed every single one of them as best as we could. And we, the planning commission ended up revising some of the standards to reflect public comments. And the, they finalized their recommendation on February twenty eighth. So some of the changes that were made based on public comments was that the open space requirements were further defined. Those are the requirements for having like a interior courtyard or a deck, a private deck or a private balcony. Those were, they wanted to define what, what would be private versus public and the dimensions of each. And what needs to be included to be considered an open space. The community or the people that spoke wanted to keep the twelve-foot third-story setback on Lighthouse Avenue on Foam Street. Staff had recommended a lesser setback of seven feet, but the community came out in support of the twelve-foot setback because that was very important to them to have a greater buffer between the building and lighthouse slash Foam Street. The public also wanted variation in architectural detailing, parapet and materials. And that the facade of a building must be divided into two or more divisions, showing that variation to to try to keep a building looking small rather than having a big monotonous facade. And then another change that was made based on public comment was that massage establishments were prohibited on the ground floor facing Lighthouse Avenue. And there are a lot of standards in your packet as labeled as exhibits A and B. But it's staff's recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution establishing these objective standards as recommended by the planning commission and also adopt the other amendments in the resolution. And I'm here for questions. I can pull up each of the standards if needed, but thank you.
Joking. Though it would be fun for some of us, I think. Any questions on the council?
Yeah, I've got one, one question. So I understand that this is necessary to get ahead of SB thirty-five. So do we do this with other specific plans across the city and what else is waiting, wait, waiting to come forward like the North Fremont specific plan?
Yes, the reason that we decided to focus on downtown and lighthouse first was because historically, we've seen more redevelopment in those areas. And so we wanted to get ahead of those areas. In case we saw a big proposal come up that did qualify for SB thirty-five, we wanted to make sure that we could apply objective design standards to them so that they don't go ahead and build something that's inconsistent with our community vision. But North Fremont would be the next specific plan that we would update.
And in a follow-up question to this, let's say we took the position of this council said, we want to do nothing. And we were hands off on the topic and SB thirty-five roars its ugly head and the state comes in. What does the state then come in and do under SB thirty-five if we did not act?
Well, if you decide not to adopt these standards, then we can only apply the ones that we have currently in our specific plans, which are, like I mentioned, building height maximums, setbacks, parking requirements, anything numerical that we can apply, but nothing else. So anyone could come in and paint the building whatever color they liked or make swirly shapes on it or like many multiple things that we would have no control over.
Okay. So it's not a case that the state comes in and does anything. It's a case that it's an open door. And it's a green light for owners and developers to do whatever they want unless it's listed in a specific way that's an objective standard.
Right.
Okay. Good. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Any, any questions on this side? Chris, I'm gonna go to you.
I'm not sure if maybe I missed this item, but, or maybe it's, it's not relevant to this point. But in, in, in these design standards, is there any opportunity to look at like canopy landscaping, that kind of thing?
Yes, we do include standards for awnings and landscaping. They are included in the packet. Do you want me to go through each one?
No, not necessarily. I was just curious and more specifically, I guess relating to maybe the planting of trees, right? More specifically focusing on canopy.
A tree canopy?
Tree on the street or, or either onto the property.
Yes, our standards, the way that we wrote them, say that trees shall be preserved on site. If that is, would prevent development of the housing project, then we do allow removal of that tree, but we require a replacement ratio of one removal, three replacements for one removal. And if they cannot, for some reason, spit three replacements, like it would preclude development of the housing project, then they can apply for a true removal permit where they can work out with staff a, another removal ratio or solution.
The lighthouse twelve-foot setback. I, I want to see if we can chisel down on this a little bit more. Is there concern from a staff perspective around the inability to develop something with a twelve-foot setback requirement?
Originally, the, the idea to reduce the twelve-foot setback to seven feet was to allow for more floor area to fit in a third story of a building to potentially get an additional housing unit on that story. But again, the planning commission and the public, they were receptive of the twelve, keeping the twelve-foot setback. Because the public raised a concern that that there are existing buildings on Lighthouse Avenue that do have that much of a setback. And they wanted to reduce what they called the tunnel effect of driving down Lighthouse Avenue with buildings to the third story being too close to the street. And also they wanted to prevent any views from New Monterey being blocked by the setbacks being too close to the side streets, so blocking ocean views. So that's why they, they settled on keeping the twelve-foot setback.
If I recall correctly, when I was, when I was on the council prior to becoming mayor, there was a project that had came in front of the council. And this topic came up of a request to do, make a requirement of an additional setback requirement. And I don't know whatever happened to that. It never came back to the council. I'm not sure how familiar you are with that project. But as I recall it, there was field trips and there was like a lot of opportunity for the public to look at. And I, I'm not sure if story polls were put up, but there was, I, I thought we looked at it and there wasn't view sharing issues. Do you recall at all?
So, so the, the last project that I remember, and I, I do not recall that you were on the council then, but where we had a very intense discussion was two thirty lighthouse. And that's the building that, that was developed by Carl Alton and then taken over by Montage Health. And that was the, the building where, where the community really rallied and, and where we put the setback of twelve feet on the third floor. So that was the last project that I recall. And I, I, again, I, I might not recall everything, but where, where really this conversation was, was very strong in front of this council and, and we, we understood at that time that that means that there are less square feet on, on the third floor. Now, Lighthouse Avenue has many three-story buildings. And I encourage everyone to drive through Lighthouse and then count the stories because you don't know how many three-story buildings are there because of the setbacks. And that was, that was important to the community and to the specific neighborhood there to have that type of setback to, in order to do not have this tunnel effect and also in order to have or not view impacts from the properties above Lighthouse. So that was the only one I remember.
Yeah, something did come forward, but nothing ever happened for me. I think that there was so much pushback that we decided to, we asked staff to do more and then it never came back. So I don't know what happened with that project, but neither here nor there. Changing topics a little bit, this I imagine greatly impacts the work of the Architecture Review Committee. So I'm just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit in regards to what this looks like as far as the change and, and what goes in front of the ARC.
So these projects that would qualify under SB thirty-five streamlining would not go through any discretionary process. So it would not go to ARC. It would not, staff wouldn't be making any approval. We would just be going through the checklist and if it meets all of them, it moves on to the building permit stage. So we could be seeing, if we do get projects submitted that do qualify, that would be less projects that the ARC would be approving or denying.
Okay. And then one more. And I'm kind of squeezing this in here. It's a little bit of a stretch, so stop me, Chrissy, if I'm going, going awry. But I see Levy is in the chamber and I don't think the council has had an opportunity to be introduced. So I was wondering if that might be an opportunity for him to come up and say hello and introduce himself and maybe share a little bit about himself. Perfect. Thank you, Chrissy, for giving me the, I'll clear on that.
We clear this matter first because I've got a question.
Go ahead and, go ahead and.
Yeah, because while, while Fernanda is there, I think.
Yeah, no worries.
We want to wrap it up for Fernanda.
Okay.
So you've mentioned the, the twelve-foot setback as it stands, just to clarify, for the downtown specific as well as the lighthouse, that's only for third story. Is that correct?
Sorry, it, no, there is no twelve-story setback for, sorry, twelve-foot setback for downtown. It's just applies to lighthouse.
Just applies to.
And Foam Street.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
And only on the third story.
Just the third story.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And while we still have her here, any other questions on this side? Okay. All right. Thank you, Fernanda. Well, let's, I'll, so I'll come back to Levy, maybe when, when, before we make the motion. So why don't we take it out to the public? Anybody in? Levi, sorry, I mispronounced it. Thank you for the correction. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, anybody online?
No hands raised.
All right. Bring it back to the council and we'll have Levi come up before we deliberate this interesting topic. Welcome to City of Monterey.
Thank you. Levi Hill, new planning manager on week three here. So very exciting. Happy to be here and happy that the council is considering this topic tonight. Joined from the city of Ventura where I was previously, but very, very happy to be in the community of Monterey and working for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for the quick introduction. I'm sure we'll get to have you do some presentations more later on, but hopefully that was a nice, quick intro for everybody. All right, let's deliberate.
I, I'm going to move that we approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number seventeen, Everado Street Maintenance District Assessment Protest Vote. Pass it to Hans for staff.
Yeah, I think it's much that, that is an exciting item. We will count votes and all that. So I think, who's giving the brief presentation? Tom, are you talking about it? Yeah. Okay, Tom Hardy will bring it over the finish line, hopefully.
Thank you. So, oh, there we go. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. This afternoon, we actually have two public hearings for the two maintenance districts. Item number seventeen is for the Alvarado Street Maintenance District. It's established in nineteen eighty-five under the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. Item number eighteen, agenda item number eighteen is the Kai Principale Maintenance District, which was established in two thousand. We're here, you see, oh, I'm sorry, the, both maintenance districts are, were established to provide an additional an enhanced level of service by funding activities that are above and beyond the normal levels of service provided throughout the city. Members are assessed by their property frontage. So it's based, if you have a large frontage, you're assessed more than a small frontage. And that's how the district works. Council directed that the engineer's report be prepared for the districts on February seventh of this year. City staff met with the assessment, assessment district coordinator on March twenty-fourth. On May sixteenth, council received engineer's report and there's a copy of it attached in the agenda or with the resolution this afternoon. And that was on May sixteenth. The assessments this year on Alvarado Street in the Maintenance District, the, it's a dollar and fifty-seven cents per lineal foot of frontage. On Kai Principale, it's eleven cents per lineal foot of frontage. And so this vote this afternoon, we're opening the votes. It's a protest vote, which means if a majority of the district members protest the assessment, it will not pass. But assuming that it does pass, we will be asking you to adopt the resolution confirming the assessment at the district boundaries and file it with the county auditor controller by the August first deadline. And I'd be open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Just to clarify, we're only handling seventeen first.
Okay, that's correct.
Just want to make sure.
Okay, any other questions? Alrighty, so we will stand by while the votes are being counted.
Yes, and it's still officially part of the meeting. We're not officially taking a break.
Okay, we'll play, we'll play, we'll play Jeopardy music. No pressure. We don't have. Sorry.
We'll turn on the giants then. Turn on the giants.
To the giant.
Well, it's pregame stuff, yeah. Oh, yeah. I know what side you'd be on.
Something shining in your eyes? Uh yeah, 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 a halo effect. Um. Yeah.
Production now. You know this one?
Just to kind of give everyone.
Great, um. My daughter has. She's due in September. And uh.
Okay. Five, three, four, zero, zero, two. Yes. Five, three, four, zero, zero, three. Yes. Okay. Five, three, four, zero, zero, seven. Yes. Okay. Five, three, four, zero, one, one. Yes. Okay. Five, three, five, zero, one, or zero, zero, one. No. Okay. Okay. Five.
Okay, so we'll bring us back here and let's hear what the votes show.
So, um, did we take public comment on this one?
Oh, thank you. Um, keeping me on track here. Take it out to public. Anybody in the chamber? That's all staff. Bring it. Just kidding, people online. The chambers are booming right now. All right, we'll take it online.
And there are no hands raised.
All right. All right, we'll do the vote count.
Yes, and there was also a majority on yes on this one as well.
Awesome. Okay, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. If we can grab Councilmember Smith. And while we're transitioning to that, I will just ask if there's anybody in the chamber that wishes to speak on items in closed session. Figures. And is there anybody online?
Or comments on closed session? I thought. Um. I believe no. Looks like no hands raised.
No hands. Okay. Um. All right, with that, we'll adjourn to closed session, right? Okay, yes, that's what we're doing.
Recording in progress.
Thanks for your patience, everybody, as we transitioned here out of closed session. We'll go ahead and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll go ahead and ask Councilmember Smith to start us off.
Joining with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll do continued public comment. So this is for items that are not on this evening's agenda. So if you wish to speak to items not on this evening's agenda, feel free to step up to the mic, and you have your three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, and anyone else. I want to impress upon you how important it is that you save trees. Every tree now is the most valuable component for climate change. And let me give you a terrifying example of what's happening. Trees, all trees have stigmata, all plants do. It's little, like little tiny mouths on the leaves, and they're sucking in CO2 and they're releasing oxygen. And when it reaches a temperature of 104 degrees, they stop. They no longer can make photosynthesis. They can no longer make oxygen, and they can no longer absorb CO2. And that's what's happening to our planet. And the first extinction was that, the planet got too hot. No one wants to talk about this for some reason. And it's so vitally important. You, this county is cutting down over 1,015, 1,500 eucalyptus at Elk Horns Flue in the name of invasive species. And as you know what happened at Angel Island when they did that, the brush fire was uncontrollable. And when it got to the last six acres of eucalyptus, it stopped. They were able to stop it because of the fog drip kept the grasses damp underneath. So what is happening at Elk Horns Flue, they're going to cut all these eucalyptus, and then they're planting prairie grass. So they're actually making a fire hazard. And this whole project was just, wasn't even publicly announced. They just slipped it under the rug. Nina, Nina made a comment in the legal time. They never even notified her or addressed her about this issue. So I'm asking you to please stop this in the name of climate change. We have to save every tree, and you can't just plant little tiny trees, little saplings. You have got to save them. They are the air conditioners of our city. And that atrocious parking lot that looks like something out of San Jose or Los Angeles is a heat zone. There is no big trees. You need to plant some big trees and remove some of those parking spaces, just so that it looks like something from Window of the Bay. And it doesn't look like this eyesore of just a sea of cars. And what it's creating is that hot temperature which disables the trees around it to give us the necessary oxygen and absorb the CO2. Thank you.
Dan Turner, Monterey, and I just want to say that I completely agree with everything that Summer said. What I came here to speak about was Sports Center. I think there's a city council of 35 years ago, the one that decided to build the Sports Center, had a vision of the facility serving all of the people of the Monterey Peninsula. I think that was a wonderful vision, one that I hope the current city council will adopt. First, I want to thank City Manager Usler for all the time he has put into responding to my emails about the situation at Sports Center. I understand that full-time employees are very expensive due to the fringe benefits they receive in addition to their full-time salary. However, without the addition of some full-time staff to enable the Sports Center to reopen the childcare facility, increase the number of swim lessons, the Sports Center will be falling very short of its mission of serving the entire community. Right now, the kids' own, with kids' own clothes, folks with small children simply cannot use the Sports Center because they have no childcare for their kids while they are exercising. So that's one group that's not being served. Another problem is the cleanliness of the Sports Center. Most gyms I've been to have been dirty, sometimes disgustingly so, especially the locker rooms and the restrooms. The Sports Center, however, has always been the cleanest gym I've ever been to, and by a long shot. And it's an important selling point when prospective members are given a tour of the facility. In the before times, the Sports Center had six full-time employees cleaning it, two during the day and four at night. Right now, it's being cleaned by part-time people. And the problem with that is that part-timers just don't have the same buy-in in terms of feeling personally responsible for and proud of the cleanliness of the facility that full-timers would have. Part-timers are always looking for a full-time job, and as a result, turnover has been very high with all the costs of hiring and training that high turnover causes. Even if we can't return immediately to six full-time employees for cleaning the Sports Center, just two or three would be a big improvement. Thank you.
Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on items not on this evening's agenda? Let's go online, please.
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay. Do we have to do announcements out of closed session? Okay, let's go ahead and do that now.
Okay, so item one was a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, which was an impasse finding arbitration pursuant to Charter Section 5.4 with the Monterey Firefighter Association slash International Association of Firefighters Local 3707 versus the City of Monterey. And in that matter, no reportable action was taken. And item two, which is a conference with labor negotiators, Brett Neal and Gina Russo regarding Monterey Executive Management Employees Association, that item was continued till the end of the evening's session.
Thanks, Clementine. All right, with that, we'll go to our public appearance items. Number 19 is the Lead Me Home five-year plan update. We'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may just give Lorna the information that we are planting 24 trees in the waterfront lot. So that's part of the project. So 20 trees were removed, 24 will be replaced. So give them a chance, they will grow. So there will be 24 trees, and they grow rather fast. If you remember the trees we had in front of the conference center, they were all made fun of, and now they are proud large trees. So the next item is, will be presented by Genevieve Lucas-Conwell. She is the Executive Director for the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers. It's about a very worthy program, the Lead Me Home program. And we are asking council to receive the presentation and then also to adopt a resolution that basically will make this program part of our own mission to provide services and visions for dealing with many assets of homelessness. For that, go ahead, Genevieve. Thank you for coming here.
Well, thank you for having me. Hello, good evening. My name is Genevieve Lucas-Conwell. Thank you for the kind introduction, Hans. Thank you to City Council for having me again. And today, I'm talking to you all about the Lead Me Home continuum of care. So homelessness, as we all know it, feels so hard to grasp. Here are the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers. We are the continuum of care in Monterey and San Benio County. And we have a beautiful five-year plan outlined for you all, for all of our cities and our counties, just to really kind of see how do we need to tackle this issue for us to really start reducing homelessness in our counties. So first off, who are we? So as I mentioned, we are the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers. We are the continuum of care for Monterey and San Benio County. We are, our mission is to eliminate homelessness in Monterey and San Benio County by promoting regional partnerships and energy and inter-agency collaboration for a comprehensive system of housing for our diverse populations. And our vision is a community where homelessness is rare, brief, and non-reoccurring, where everyone lives with dignity and respect in a home of their choosing that is safe, healthy, and affordable. I just can't not stress our vision enough. I think it really hones in to the fact that the reality of it is, we can't, we can only minimize when folks lose their housing to a certain point. But we can make sure that when they are experiencing homelessness, they are met. It is for a rare and brief period of time, and they're met with dignity at every step of the way. So that's what we're working towards at the Coalition every day. So what do we do? So as a continuum of care, we are designated by HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, from the federal government to be the strategic arm within our counties to make sure that we have regional collaboration on how do we want to tackle homelessness. So we have a couple of responsibilities to make sure that we are performing a system that can support our unhoused population. Part of that is coordinating federal and state funding opportunities. So a big funding source that we support and manage is the
Example of what's happening. Trees, all trees have stigmata, all plants do. It's little like little tiny mouths on the leaves. And they're sucking in CO2 and they're releasing oxygen. And when it reaches a temperature of one hundred and four degrees, they stop. They no longer can make photosynthesis. They can no longer make oxygen and they can no longer absorb CO2. And that's what's happening to our planet. And the first extinction was that the planet got too hot. No one wants to talk about this for some reason. And it's so vitally important if you, this county is cutting down over a thousand fifteen, one thousand five hundred eucalyptus at Elkhorn Slough in the name of invasive species. And as you know, what happened at Angel Island when they did that? The brush fire was uncontrollable. And when it got to the last six acres of eucalyptus, it stopped. They were able to stop it because of the fog drip kept the grasses damp underneath. So what is happening at Elkhorn Slough? They're going to cut all these eucalyptus and then they're planting prairie grass. So they're actually making a fire hazard. And this whole project was just wasn't even publicly announced. They just slipped it under the rug. Nina Nina made a a comment in the legal time. They never even notified her or addressed her about this issue. So I'm asking you to please stop this in the name of climate change. We have to save every tree and you can't just plant little tiny trees, little saplings. You have got to save them. They are the air conditioners of our city. And that atrocious parking lot that looks like something out of San Jose or Los Angeles is a heat zone. There is no big trees. You need to plant some big trees and remove some of those parking spaces. Just so that it looks like something from Window of the Bay. And it doesn't look like this eyesore of just a sea of cars. And what it's creating is that hot temperature which disables the trees around it to give us the necessary oxygen and absorb the CO2. Thank you.
Dan Turner Monterey. And I just want to say that I completely agree with everything that Summer said. What I came here to speak about was Sports Center. I think there's a city council of thirty five years ago, the one that decided to build the sports center had a vision of the facility serving all of the people of the Monterey Peninsula. I think that was a wonderful vision, one that I hope the current city council will adopt. First, I want to thank city manager Ousler. For all the time he has put into responding to my emails about the situation at Sports Center. I understand that full time employees are very expensive due to the fringe benefits they receive in addition to their full time salary. However, without the addition of some full time staff to enable the sports center to reopen the childcare facility, increase the number of swim lessons, the sports center will be falling very short of its mission of serving the entire community. Right now, the kids own with kids own clothes. Folks with small children simply cannot use the sports center because they have no childcare for their kids while they are exercising. So that's one group that's not being served. Another problem is the cleanliness of the sports center. Most gyms I've been to have been dirty, sometimes disgustingly so, especially the locker rooms and the restrooms. The sports center, however, has always been the cleanest gym I've ever been to and by a long shot. And it's an important selling point when prospective members are given a tour of the facility. In the before times, the sports center had six full time employees cleaning it, two during the day and four at night. Right now, it's being cleaned by part time people. And the problem with that is that part timers just don't have the same buy in in terms of feeling personally responsible for and proud of the cleanliness of the facility that full timers would have. Part timers are always looking for a full time job and as a result, turnover has been very high. With all the costs of hiring and training that high turnover causes. Even if we can't return immediately to six full time employees for cleaning the sports center, just two or three would be a big improvement. Thank you.
Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on items not on this evening's agenda? Let's go online, please.
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay. Do we have to do announcements out of closed session? Okay, let's go ahead and do that now.
Okay, so item one was a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, which was an impasse finding arbitration pursuant to Charter Section 5.4 with the Monterey Firefighter Association slash International Association of Firefighters Local 3707 versus the city of Monterey. And in that matter, no reportable action was taken. And item two, which is a conference with labor negotiators, Brett Neal and Gina Russo regarding Monterey Executive Management Employees Association. That item was continued till the end of the evening session.
Thanks Clementine. All right, with that, we'll go to our public appearance items. Number nineteen is the Lead Me Home Five Year Plan Update. We'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If if I may just give Lorna the information that we are planting twenty four trees in the waterfront lot. So that's part of the project. So twenty trees were removed, twenty four will be replaced. So give them a chance, they will grow. So there will be twenty four trees and they grow rather fast. If you if you remember the trees we had in front of the conference center, they were all made fun of and now they are proud large trees. So the the next item is is will be presented by Genevieve Lucas Conwell. She is the executive director for the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers. It's about a very worthy program, the Lead Me Home Program. And we are asking council to receive the presentation and then also to adopt a resolution that that basically will make this program part of our own mission to provide services and visions for for dealing with many assets of homelessness. For that, go ahead, Genevieve. Thank you for coming here.
Well, thank you for having me. Hello, good evening. My name is Genevieve Lucas Conwell. Thank you for the kind introduction, Hans. Thank you to city council for having me again. And today I'm talking to you all about the Lead Me Home Continuum of Care. So homelessness, as we all know it, feels so hard to grasp. Here are the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers. We are the continuum of care in Monterey and San Benito County. And we have a beautiful five year plan outlined for you all, for all of our cities and our counties, just to really kind of see how do we need to tackle this issue for us to really start reducing homelessness in our counties. So first off, who are we? So as I mentioned, we are the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers. We are the continuum of care for Monterey and San Benito County. We are a mission is to eliminate homelessness in Monterey and San Benito County by promoting regional partnerships and energies and interagency collaboration for a comprehensive system of housing for our diverse populations. And our vision is a community where homelessness is rare, brief and nonrecurring, where everyone lives with dignity and respect in a home of their choosing that is safe, healthy and affordable. I just can't not stress our vision enough. I think it really hones in to the fact that the reality of it is we can't, we can only minimize when folks lose their housing to a certain point. But we can make sure that when they are experiencing homelessness, they are met. It is for a rare and brief period of time and they're met with dignity at every step of the way. So that's what we're working towards at the coalition every day. So what do we do? So as a continuum of care, we are designated by HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development from the federal government to be the strategic arm within our counties to make sure that we have regional collaboration on how do we want to tackle homelessness. So we have a couple of responsibilities to make sure that we are performing a a system that can support our unhoused population. Part of that is coordinating federal and state funding opportunities. So a big funding source that we support and manage is the continuum of care. No phone notice of funding opportunity from HUD. It's actually currently active. So we have a lot of information coming out soon. And so there's actually more information on that next Wednesday. We also perform and operate the homeless management information system. So it's the data point to understand who's experiencing homelessness in our county, in our cities at any given time. What is their demographic? So we can really make sure we have a pulse on homelessness and who is experiencing homelessness and what is the need of our unhoused population. Then we also operate a coordinated entry assessment and referral system. That is a prioritization system essentially saying who is the most vulnerable in our population? And who needs to, based off of that, how do we get into get them into housing first? Then we operate the unsheltered point time count, the pit. You might have heard about it and I'll go over it at the end a little bit. So don't you fright, I got you all covered. Coordinated housing inventory as well. So that's our report that we produce annually. We are actually just finally wrapping that up. But that goes over what's our housing inventory? How's it being used? How many vacancies do we have? Why are we, you know, are we overperforming? How are we performing as a county? Then the regional homeless strategic plan and implementation. That is our Lead Me Home Plan. That's our responsibility to make sure we have an updated plan for all of our cities and our county to make sure that we have a strategy as to how we need to address homelessness locally. As well as I mentioned, all the data that we that we run through our systems. We use that data to make sure that we're implementing policies that our services providers, our funders can also utilize to make sure that we have best practices at every level of our system. So that is just in a little nutshell what we do. All right, so the five year plan to reduce homelessness in Monterey and San Benito County. Let's talk about it. So in 2020, our leadership council, which is our continuum of care board, decided to update our ten year plan to end homelessness. And in 2020, we decided as a leadership council to not end homelessness, but set a little bit more of a realistic goal, which is to reduce homelessness in our counties. So in 2021, we adopted the, we our board, our leadership council, adopted the Lead Me Home Five Year Plan to Reduce Homelessness by fifty percent by 2026. So that is what we're on a mission to do today and every day until 2026. And past 2026, of course. So we engaged with a consultant called Focus Strategies to guide the plan and development process. We had a lot of partners and stakeholders. Some key stakeholders were Monterey Department of Social Services, Monterey Health Department, San Benito Health and Human Services and the city of Salinas. Feedback was sought from community stakeholders, including folks with lived experience as well. We had a lot that it was that went into the Lead Me Home Plan. So part of it was a preliminary systems assessment. So we looked at our systems and decided, okay, what's working? What's not working? What do we need to elevate in our systems? We looked at program and system performance analysis, a predictive modeling, housing market gaps analysis, stakeholder and community input sessions, a community survey and plan development sessions. So you can count that, you know, probably over fifty voices in our counties went into this plan. Guiding principles, so things that led and guided our Lead Me Home Plan. Embedded with dignity and respect, true to our vision and our mission. Informed by people with lived experience of homelessness. Nothing about us without us is the common saying with our lived experience advisory directive and our use for action board, which are both committees in our coalition. Housing focused, data driven towards results. It's coordinated and equitable and social justice oriented. Strategies and goals. As I mentioned, are the goal of this plan is to reduce homelessness in Monterey and San Benito County by fifty percent by 2026. So there's a couple of different metrics that we're measuring the success by. So one of them is homelessness reduction targets. So when we first looked at the baseline, we were at around twenty seven, twenty seven hundred. So that was in 2019, 2020. We projected with COVID that it was going to be an increase in the first year of our plan. So you'll see here there was an uptick in our projections, which was around thirty six hundred. Then from there on, we are, our goal is by year five, you will get to twelve hundred ninety seven within our continuum of care. So that's both Monterey and San Benito County. So that's we're looking, like I mentioned, total numbers of people experiencing homelessness for Monterey County. That would be around just above one thousand one hundred and sixty two. Then system target. So a couple of different things that we're looking at are different measures and actually our systems and our targets are updated monthly on our websites under our data center. So you're absolutely welcome to look on a monthly basis as to how we're doing with our current metrics. But our current metrics are entries from literal homelessness. So in depending on the projects that folks are entering, are they entering emergency shelters from literal homelessness, transitional housing from literal homelessness, rapid rehousing? What's their length of stay in those programs? And what's their exit rate to permanent housing? So if they're entering an emergency shelter, what's the percentage of those folks that are entering permanent supportive housing? Transitional housing, same thing, and same with rapid rehousing.
Any real quick, could you describe what literal homelessness means?
Yes, so literal homelessness means that literal homelessness, there's a couple of different definitions for HUD. And so with literal homelessness, we do mean somebody that is staying outside. And so in chronic homelessness, chronic homelessness is defined by HUD for somebody that is staying three months or more in outside. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Of course. All right, so there's three overarching strategies as to how we want to get to those performance performance targets that we have here today. One is increased participation in homeless solutions by leaders and key stakeholders across the region. Two, improve performance of the homeless response system and providing pathways to housing. And three, expand service oriented response to unchallenged homelessness. So the first strategy, increasing participation by stakeholders and stakeholders across the region. It's actually something that we're doing right here, right now, is looking to see how can the city of Monterey be part of our stakeholders by adopting this plan? So part of it is how we've accomplished it in our first years is we've in the June, in the summer of last year, we hosted the summit on homelessness. There was around five hundred and twenty participants that attended the summit. The COC developed a coordinated investment plan in partnership with Monterey County. So how are we going to be investing our dollars? The housing pipeline committee that we host, which happens every other month, has been reestablished and we have completed a fair market study. We establish a youth action board. So like I mentioned, nothing about us without us. It's really important to us that folks with lived experience are part of the solution. Leadership council has opened two positions for folks with lived experience, one being from the Youth for Action Board. And then CHSP, which is the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers, opened two positions for people with lived experience to join our board of directors, which is different than our leadership council. Then continuing strategy number one, it's training on authentic youth engagement. So not only are we going to support and build a system for our youth to thrive, but we're also going to make sure that our service providers have the tools in their toolbox to make sure that we're providing best services to our youth. And people with lived experience assisted with the design and implementation of the 2022 point time count. Establish a funders committee. So we do have a funders committee that looks at some of our different investment plans that we have or any of our funding opportunities that we might have, looking at to see what is our prioritization. Not only does our funders committee look at this, but also our lived experience councils also have a say as well. Strategy area two, improve performance of the homeless response system and providing pathways to housing. So this one, it's looking at housing navigation services and making sure that we're providing that at the street level, making sure that we're providing housing services, not just basic barrier removal in outreach, but actually providing services to getting folks their housing applications ready, getting them a car's assessment ready, right, right from the street, right where they might be located. Then creating coordinated entry system for youth. One of our big, one of our big goals is to get to not only functional zero within homelessness. And I'll pause right there and define functional zero. Functional zero homelessness is supporting everyone that wants to get supported into housing. So that's our goal is to get to functional zero. So functional zero for youth is one step closer for us to getting to that is building a whole system for coordinated entry for youth, which actually we are very close to getting done. And establishing outreach collaborative that meets monthly, including people with lived experience in all aspects of funding, like I mentioned before. Strategy area three, expand service oriented response to unchallenged homelessness. So how do we get services? How can we meet folks where they are at immediately? So one of the things that we actually just got approved by the Watsonville City is encameral resolution funding from the state that was awarded about eight million dollars to the county to build tiny homes. And so that's one way that we're looking to not only make sure that we're providing services to everybody, but looking at regional disparities, right? Paharo is historically, there's not been a lot of services out there. So how can we make sure that we have housing opportunities for folks in North County? Same goes with South County, same goes with the peninsula, Salinas Valley. So making sure we have regional approaches. So as we all know, tiny homes, the tiny homes, which is I'm blanking on the name, dignity moves is going to be the vendor that's going to be supporting that project. We're also encouraging street medicine. So making sure that folks have accessible healthcare right where they're at. So we're partnering with Clinica de Salud, Dorothy's Place, also access support network, just to make sure that they they have mobile clinics, they have doctors that come with them, making sure that folks can get taken care of right here, right there, right then. Also making sure and looking to expand safe parking programs as well as outreach in both of our counties. So we actually even just approved San Benito's first outreach program in our last leadership council meeting in April. So it's still an important part of our program. People need to be met, they need to get serviced where they are located so that we can get that them connected to the services. The progress, so what we've done so far with the Lead Me Home Plan and what we're seeing from the 2022 point time count. So actually, we've been really successful. You might have seen in our performance targets that we actually, in the first year of our Lead Me Home Plan, we were expecting a rise. We actually got about a sixteen percent decrease in Monterey County specifically. So you can see we had about twenty four, two thousand four hundred and twenty two folks that are experiencing homelessness in our county. And that reduced by two thousand forty seven. One of the misconceptions about homelessness is it's folks that are coming from outside of town. Our data says otherwise. It's actually residents of our county. So you'll see here that residency at time of homelessness, eighty three percent of folks that took our survey were were residents of Monterey County before they ended up homeless. And if you look at the length of time in Monterey County before they fell into homelessness, sixty four percent of them lived in Monterey County for ten plus more years. So these are our neighbors. It's just that they don't have shelter and it's our responsibility to to get them to to shelter. Accommodations you'll see on the night of the count. So there was about forty seven folks that were outdoors. Twenty eight percent were, and I'm so sorry, my, this is me needing glasses, the harsh reality of it that I'm experiencing right now. But twenty eight percent were bound tents, seventeen percent in vehicles, five percent in abandoned buildings and three percent in RVs. Twenty two percent are in for our sheltered and sheltered population. On the top left corner, you'll see about thirty four percent were sheltered, sixty six percent were unsheltered. We are actually doing a lot better than when we were doing in 2020 for the point time count. That data point was about twenty percent sheltered. And so that means, you know, we've increased our emergency shelter, we've increased our transitional housing and rapid rehousing programs. So that's really, it's, you know, it's still, we have a long way to go. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge that we still have work to do. It's good to see that we're moving in the right direction. And the primary conditions to that lead to homelessness is we saw that was about fifty percent of those that were that fell into homelessness was because of financial issues. Thirty four percent were because of alcohol or drug use, twenty nine percent incarceration, twenty three percent mental health issues, twenty two percent legal issues, twenty one percent divorce, separation and breakup. So I think this really highlights that homelessness can affect anyone. And something that I really want to emphasize as well is as humans, we have three basic needs. It's food, shelter and water. Here at the coalition, we are supportive in making sure that we have a system that can that service the the shelter of our residents. And with that, that is my presentation. So I'm, what we're asking here today is for the city of Monterey to adopt the plan. The purpose of the plan is really to outline what are the strategic steps as I allow outline them here today in my presentation as to how do we reduce homelessness by fifty percent by 2026? This cannot be done alone. It takes every city and every jurisdiction. And I welcome city of Monterey to become the fifth city to adopt the plan. We have the county of, or the fifth jurisdiction, my apologies. We have the county of Monterey that's adopted it, the county of San Benito, King City, city of Saladad. And we're inviting Monterey to be the fifth city.
Well, only if you came to us first. No, just kidding. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the presentation. Council questions? That's Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you, Genevieve, for the presentation. I have a few questions. Can you talk a little bit more about the data gathering process?
The data gathering process for our homeless management information system or for the plan? So, okay, perfect. Yeah, so for homeless management information system, so HMIS is a program that we have around two hundred and fifty, you or we have, sorry, two hundred and eight users around the county that around the counties that utilize our system. So those users are case managers, emergency shelters, folks that operate rapid rehousing, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, service providers. And so from that data, essentially when folks enter a shelter or any type of rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, anyone that's seeking care in our system has to fill out a an assessment and that's an HMIS assessment. And so that data is stored securely in our database. We use service points and WellSky as our as our vendor. They are well experienced in HIPAA compliance. They actually operate a medical platform as well. So we're very secure about our data there. From there, we have a number of reports that we can pull from HMIS. And so part of our data comes from that, from from HMIS. As well as with the plan, it's all of those different plans that I outlined. There's our predictive modeling, there's a housing market analysis. And there's multiple ways that we get the data. It's a lot of stakeholder interviews, community, community input surveys. So it's gathered within those different plans. There's it, there, there's its own data strategy that's informed our own Lead Me Home Plan. And like I mentioned, Focus Strategies was our consultant during the time that we built the plan. So what was really strong about them is that they were really, data was how they led their strategies. And that's what we wanted for this plan as well.
So your consultant went out and did like the surveys and?
They hosted, they built the surveys and we partnered with our leadership council to make sure that we handed out the surveys to our communities. We also, like I mentioned, held stakeholder interviews. And so they also, we partnered with them to build interview questions and to to interview our stakeholders in the community.
Okay, great. Do you folks also work with McKinny Vento or align with their efforts?
Yes, so actually, the reason why continuum cares actually exists is because of the original McKinney Vento vote, the Hearth Act. So they, we have deep roots with McKinney Vento and we also work with the Department of Education. They're both on, they're on with our board of directors as well as our leadership council. So the McKinney Vento liaison, Dr. Smith, is a close partner of ours.
Oh, that great. I recently saw a report from our local school district and we we have some some pretty sad numbers. So I I think that would be something that I I'd also like to see more more efforts, right, going into to see how we can support our students.
Definitely.
And and in in practical terms, how do you or your team envision city of Monterey partnering up effectively in in practical terms?
You know, the city of Monterey is actually a wonderful partner already. So I do want to just give a shout out to city manager Ousler here for really just setting up systems for our, the current city of Monterey resident, unchallenged residents to thrive. So, you know, from what I'm hearing, there's a drop in shot, drop in navigation center that's going to be opening up, which is huge. It really is big for us to at least have an access point for folks. And I'll say this as well, the CAT team, the Monterey CAT team, Community Action Team from the department, the police department has been wonderful. They're a regular attendee at our outreach committees. They actually attended today. And, you know, I completely endorse their model of engagement to the community. I think I would love for for it to be a model for our county, honestly. We, I have gone with them on outreach. I've, our team has gone on with them on outreach. And so it's a longevity of partnership that I'm looking for. This is not going to end. Homelessness is not going to end and we have to just realize that. We just have to make sure that we have systems in place to support our unhoused, unhoused residents. And so And so it's a continuity of partnership that we're looking for. It's also, um you know, I think the partnership's already on the table. We just really have to mobilize. The adopting the plan is really also, it's a benefit to the city and making sure that we're really memorializing our partnership and saying, look, there's a plan in place that the city can actually utilize locally. It's based off of local data. It's based off of our residents and um we've done the legwork essentially. And so yeah, I'll pause there.
Thank you for your presentation. You know, with respect to the kind of unexpected drop in homelessness going into the twenty twenty-two count, I have my own theories about that. But I'm just curious if you and the Coalition have formulated any kinds of theories um to explain that.
Yeah. So during that time with COVID, it was like we mentioned, we were actually expecting a rise. And you know, I think it's always cautious for us to make sure that we're always expecting that there might be more folks that are possibly losing their housing. So we always have to operate in a sense of urgency. But in COVID, there was a lot of money uh that came to our community. One of the successes, successful programs was Project Roomkeep that opened up in Marina. It housed a lot of people. There's a lot more permanent supportive housing that came into place. Uh Moon Gate was one of them. And um there's more permanent supportive housing um that's being stood up. There's two projects in Salinas and one King City. In terms of San Benito County, there's also a permanent supportive housing project that they're applying for. So I think it's there. I will say that COVID mobilized our community in in a way that I hope continues um with with our population.
That was my theory too. And I think it's an important point to kind of reiterate for the public. Sometimes people think like spending money on this problem isn't going to solve it, but I think we saw pretty dramatic um proof that because there was a a concern related to COVID, there was more more funding and it did actually have some pretty positive results. But that does also give me some concern like, so do is Project Room Key, as it has been sort of launched, going to continue? Is the funding stream going to continue? Um do you have any kind of uh information on that?
So yeah, that's a project with the city of Salinas. They're the ones that are managing that project and they're the administrator behind it. So it's not Project Room Key anymore. The Project Room Key officially quote unquote retired and it became the Emergency Motel Program. And so in terms of different funding uh that they're looking at, I know that they have some plans for it. I can't speak to it as much since we're not a funder in it anymore. But I do know that they're pursuing different sources of funding. Um but you're right, funding is definitely a huge factor in making sure that we're mobilizing efforts. We 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 see the benefits of home keys um and that what that funding is doing to our community. We see the benefits of homeless housing assistance program, which is run by the state. And this type of funding is really essential for us to keep mobilizing and meeting our metrics um and supporting unhoused residents.
And there's the last thing you mentioned, kind of um in your in your presentation about Safe Car Park programs. And um just wanted to give a shout out to One Starfish Program. Um they have a really high placement rate for a lot of their clients in terms of moving them into um in into permanent housing. And I just hope uh countywide, we can continue to try to support uh that kind of a program.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Genevieve. Appreciate it. Um as I'm going through the uh strategies in Strategy Area One, I and I scanned all of the other ones. Um what I see that's missing, but maybe it's not there, but it really is in the program. Uh and that's an emphasis of identifying the strategy that deals specifically with drug addiction. It it seems when I look at the statistics that are reported from the point in time and it quoted a figure of thirty-four percent alcohol and or drugs and twenty-three percent mental issues of the um homeless population. I think that if you if you looked at that and broke that down, I think those numbers are low. Um and I'm just wondering if there's been any comparison of uh working with MDOT and the CAT team and our own local resources and each each agency uh has a police department and they make contacts. I just I get a sense that that thirty-four percent is very low for drug drug addiction and and drug use. I'm sure you've seen it and others probably have seen it. Uh Seattle is dying. Well-known feature that was done and it's about an hour. Done about twenty seventeen and then they did a follow-up feature. Uh that was uh the the for the soul of Seattle. Now, larger, different state, different situation. But I think some of the field experts will tell you that the percentage of drug addiction is really at the core of many of the homeless folks, but it it seems like it's missing there in the strategy. So I just highlight that is wondering that shouldn't that be one of the strategies added? And maybe it's intended to be Strategy Area One under C because it does talk about a support implementation, including criminal justice system reps, probation courts, healthcare, hospitals, clinics, residential facilities and large employers. But I think as we we approach how we, how policies are made by policymakers, if we don't appropriately identify one of the core problems that we have with folks that may be homeless, yes, it may be unemployment, maybe it's a a horrific experience in their family, a divorce widow, a lot of circumstances. But I think at its core, there's a lot of population that have significant drug addictions. And I think that if you look at the statistics that the police departments can offer you, that that will bear out with some statistics. I think it's important not to overlook that. Also, the twenty-three percent mental health issues seems rather low too, when you look at national statistics. So the question is, what are the referrals uh and to whom for the action to provide homeless services for those that are involved in drugs and alcohol and truly need treatment? Because if you provide housing and they still have an addiction problem and still suffer from mental illness, we know that's not necessarily going to be a very long-term success of housing. So I think that we need to, you know, connect those those elements.
Yeah, I would love to respond. Um so you mentioned, you know, the the thirty-four percent and the twenty-three percent. And so one important point there too for the data is um it's what led to them being homeless. So it doesn't mean that, you know, they might not be experiencing um or, you know, have fallen to addiction in some way, shape or form while they're currently experiencing homelessness. So I just want to highlight that aspect of it. That's um really highlighting what led them to go into homelessness. Um and the uh for serious mental mental illness, uh SMI is what we call it in our field. We actually just funded a program with interim. Interim actually found a couple of their programs. I'm sure you might all be aware of interim, um who's a big who is a big service provider that provides a lot of behavioral health and mental health services to our community, including our unchallenged community. So absolutely, um there can be more services, one hundred percent. And uh we just heard, uh we just supported and are funding an emergency shelter program for those uh with serious mental illness with interim. So they'll be opening up, I believe, six units um for emergency shelter program that specifically cater to those with um serious mental illness. We have multiple programs as well. There are uh permanent supportive housing that we support. So it's not just emergency, emergency, emergency shelter. So what I'm trying to say is I hear you and absolutely, you are, you are correct. We have to make sure that we're providing wraparound services and uh making sure that we're providing tailored approaches for what folks might be needing at that time, point in time. It's a reality that if you, although maybe you're meant, if you have current mental health a mental health diagnosis and you fell into homelessness and that might have not been the reason um that you fell into homelessness. Being in survival mode for that long, for that long period of time, um it definitely can cause PTSD. Absolutely. There's definitely multiple reports about it out there. But thank you for for your commentary.
Yeah, and I just, I think it's appropriate that we always talk about what some of the core problems are. And one could happen before the other. One can be the consequences of uh of a choice. But everyone needs to have a place to live.
Absolutely.
But also, everyone needs to have access to what they may have, if it's alcohol or drug addiction or they they need counseling or they need medication that can bring them up to the point where they can be functioning. So the inclusion of a lot of different services and you're you're not the service provider for everything. But you certainly are in a position to make sure that we never overlook the core reasons why they may be homeless. And I would just offer that let's not overlook uh drug addiction and alcohol as as one of the primary consequences and one of the heavy numbers of those that are being contacted in most of the communities that I'm familiar with have some form of drug addiction. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Absolutely.
I just have a a a thought on on that. I I wonder how much the response and what we hear and see in regards to the that intersection of homelessness and drug addiction and alcoholism might be kind of like iceberg effect, like we only see this much, but there's all this other
Right.
homelessness that exists that we don't really hear about. So we make assumptions based off of the entire community.
Right.
Based off of what we see and hear. So just throwing that out as a as a thought. There was some um conversation, I can't remember who asked the question, um but it just about the city of Monterey's role. And so you had iterated some of the um ways that the city of Monterey is already engaging and helping to achieve some of those efforts. So I guess I would reframe the question that I had and say it to the extent of what else can we do? Right? There's so much work. And so, yeah, we might be doing a lot of good things and let's like celebrate those wins. But what what does that look like particularly for the city of Monterey? And I'll add a little bit of commentary in here to explain my uh an area maybe a little bit further. In key strategy one point three, it states that we need to focus on extremely low income units. And so what does that look like? Does that include changing changes to our inclusionary housing requirement? So that we make sure that we address those extremely low units. Also, in the year one action plan, I guess I'm just wondering who in the city is ultimately responsible for working with the different stakeholders to ensure that we're helping to fulfill our portion of of that. Um yeah, let me pause there.
Yes, okay. So to your first question, uh what else can we do at the city of Monterey? So there is a lot of competitive funding out there and I would say the city of Monterey, don't be shy in applying for it. You know, there's the housing, um like I mentioned, HHAP, it's um it's the homeless housing, homeless housing assistance assistance program that's run by the California Interagency Council on Homelessness uh by the state. And uh last year, we were allocated um around four million dollars uh for our county. It went to support permanent supportive housing projects in King City. Like I mentioned, some emergency shelter programs, rapid rehousing, outreach, transitional housing. Um it's very, it's flexible funding. And HHAP round five so far right now, what we're observing is I don't, there's been, sorry, let me backtrack. HHAP has about four active rounds right now. We have a fifth application that's going to be coming up this year that the continuum of care, the county uh and the county will be applying for. I don't know if there's going to be another round for the state. So it's really leveraging as much of the dollars that are currently active right now and looking at funding sources that can be renewable um as well. So we have to look at one-time funding that can really support capital projects, but also looking at renewable funding projects, right? We need to make sure that these uh projects are sustain sus- sustainable once we bring them into our community. So that's a reality. Home Key, a home key is the NOFA uh for what was released a little bit ago. The deadline for it is next week um for the Home Key NOFA. But um I think I'll back up. Those are just available fundings for anyone in our county. I think what we need to look at for the city of Monterey is seeing what's realistic within our city here and seeing, you know, what are the available resources? What can we leverage? And um like I mentioned, I I want to extend a thank you to city manager um Uzler for really being a great partner and really kind of brainstorming and seeing what we can do. But I think that's what we need to look at specifically with the city of Monterey is what are the barriers right now? I know water is a big one. Um that's just the reality. And so what can we do in making sure that we're leveraging our current housing stock? Um so that's part of it. You know, the city of Solidad, uh when we introduced the plan and they adopted it, they decided that they wanted to create their own local plan. That's something that we can look at for the city of Monterey in terms of, you know, what is the plan that we specifically want to do for the city of Monterey in terms of the barriers that are specific to the city and what are some realistic objectives? So that's something that I would say for uh for your city. And in terms of who is responsible in the city, um you know, we partner a lot with the Community Development Department. And so uh Kimberly Cole has been great in her department in attounding our Housing Pipeline Committee. We invite um anybody from the city that is interested in participating in our Leadership Council. It it happens every other month. The next one is August twenty-third. It's a public meeting. It's a great way to kind of understand the pulse of our community. Homelessness and the homelessness system has its own language. And so how do you really start understanding the language that we speak in terms of the system? We invite um you all to come to our public meeting, just to really understand, like I mentioned, the pulse of uh what funding sources are out there. We really try and make sure to um talk about our system, what might be a barrier and how we're just trying to combat it and chip away at it.
So thank you. That wonderful answers. I'm wondering if there might be information that you could share regarding that. And maybe we could put that in the Friday folder for the council to have the details in regards to that meeting so that that we can attend if if able and willing. There was another place I was going to go here. There was something that you said that triggered a thought, but um there's conversation happening with the legislature about creating another affordability level. And and I've only heard some some talk about it, so I don't know how serious it is. But it looks that it looks like the idea or the goal, the the nexus behind doing that is to specifically target housing affordability for those experiencing homelessness. So I I can't remember what the percentages are, but it it would be something like creating an extremely or very, very low and whatever that category would be to be like zero to fifteen or whatever that is. And so I wasn't sure if anybody either on our staff or I'm not sure if you all know anything about those dialogues that are happening in regards to creating that that level of affordability.
We're not brought in just yet on it. I think, you know, once when it's in legislature right now, since we have such a small staff, we're really just kind of hitting the ground running with what we have in front of us. And so we um have not looked at what's in legislature right now. But um I know that we're part of the Continuum of Care Collaborative as well in the state. So we just um this is Urban Institute and that is an awesome resource in terms of what's going on that's related to homelessness and uh what's going up for a vote. So we keep a pulse on that. Uh but if I see something, I'll make sure to inform the council.
Awesome. Thank you. That's it for me. Um let's go ahead and take it out to the public for public comment. And then we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation. Thanks, Genevieve. Wonderful presentation and spot on in all your answers. So anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? And we'll go ahead and offer three minutes for everybody that wants to speak.
So um I encountered a homeless, partially paralyzed man in a wheelchair by the wharf, shivering to death one night. And there was no, there was none of these agencies out there combing the streets, asking, oh, you need help. And so I, as a citizen, realized, oh, my God, huh, these people aren't being helped. I've passed them by so many times thinking, oh, they're spoiled. They're they're getting plenty of help. There's plenty of agencies. These agencies are feeding their own employees and it's huge. And I don't know, I'm sure there are, there's help, but it's not to the extent where they're combing the streets and finding these paralyzed, this paralyzed man who would have died that night. And I ended up having to insist, he was shivering uncontrollably. And I said, I'm going to call the paramedics. He said, don't bother, Chomp will throw me out. They've thrown me out for three, three times. I said, no, they won't, not on my watch. I've emailed all of you. What I'm suggesting is a pavilion at the fairgrounds this winter. And they'll have cubicles where there'll be cots and it'll be warm. And there will be some uh coffee and tea for people to come in. And they will have a bit of privacy. And a lot of these homeless men, huh, five of them died this winter. And there was no report, you never heard about it, I never did. But dear dolphin, one of the homeless women, she was crying when she reported it. She said, because they protected her from the cartel that's threatening to rape the homeless woman on the um, the bike path. And the police, they're they're not aware of it, no one's doing anything about it. So these violent criminals and sex offenders that are out in the street, they need somewhere to go because they endanger the public to try to get back in the system. And so this pavilion would uh provide a shelter for them where they don't have to be morose and angry and threaten the public, and we take care of them as well. So please consider that because the agencies just aren't out there combing the streets. And I'm asking every homeless person I see now, have you been approached by someone? And most of them are saying, no, I have not, and I'm not being helped. And that's the honest truth. So please, before you fund any more, uh, have these agencies go out at night and find these people because they're cozy in their bed, sleeping while the homeless are out shivering to death. And Sean was verified by the hospital that he was dying if he hadn't come in. And not by Chomp, but by another hospital. Thank you.
Anybody else in the chamber? All right, let's take it online, please.
All right, I will call on Esther Malkin. Go ahead, Esther.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I wanted to bring up a point just because it happened in my neighborhood. If these shelters or these um places that we're looking to create housing do not make um some effort to allow people to keep their pets. They're not interested in going to shelters. And, you know, we right now have all of our animal shelters are overflowing because we we don't have enough rentals that accept animals. So at some point, people are not going to part with their animals and they'd rather stay on the streets. But in the bigger picture, we need to try and accommodate people with pets when in the rental market as well. And as far as the rental market goes, I guarantee you that most of the people who are living on the streets now probably were renters before they became homeless. And they're the ones that, you know, are being pushed out by these unaffordable rate rental rates. And the other, the other point is, is that there are the very low income category of people have some pro programs that they can get funding, help from. But what we're seeing is the people that aren't considered low, low income that are especially for our area, making, you know, seventy thousand to a hundred thousand dollars a year as a as a regular job. They cannot find housing either, and our working homeless population has grown significantly over the last couple of years. And even what should concern everybody in in this area and state even more is that the more people leave this the areas, the less funding we get. The less representation we get. When our population goes down, it's detrimental to a number of things. So the number one reason why people leave is because they can't afford to live here and the housing is the most expensive thing on their plate. So all roads lead back to housing people, whether it's mental health, whether it's physical health, all of that. And the and the the number one way that you guys can limit and prevent homelessness is by making sure that people can afford rents in this area until you get around to building. So I know it's not easy, but it is part of the conversation. You have to talk about prevention, not just throwing money at at the homeless. And then you've got this middle income, low middle income group that have no options to get help. And they become homeless and nobody talks about them. So that's one of the reasons that, you know, we've got to maintain all our rents to be affordable, not just super, super low income, because our workers, a lot of them are not that low income and they can't afford to live here either. And either they leave or they live in their cars. Thank you.
Thank you, and uh, Mr. Mayor, there are no further hands raised.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. Anybody want to start us off?
I'm not sure if um, I I just want to make sure I get this out so that anybody who heard me say it for a reference, it's an interesting story. As I said, it's a different city, but it's got a lot of information and data. The two were done by K O M O of Seattle uh in in-depth study. It's one is an hour, the other one's like an hour and twenty minutes. The fight for the soul of Seattle is the second one. And the first one uh in twenty seventeen is um, Seattle is dying. Um, both a fascinating story that has a lot of in-depth information in terms of what's working across the country. So I just want to make sure I got both of those out there accurately so that they can look them up.
Thank you for sharing those.
Uh, second.
Okay, it's motion and seconded, any final comments?
Uh, I'll just say thank you for those uh that have gone to the work. Well, also, the point in time, uh, I know it's every two years, it's a tremendous amount of work, very valuable. Um, and it is very valuable that we get that data set. But also that we look at uh the data set that the city of Monterey has. Um, so every city has their unique um problems and issues uh based on geographics and um shelters and, you know, folks that um are in some other cities across the county. But the city of Monterey, uh, I think has a fabulous model of M dot um operated with the police chief uh that has done some tremendous work. And I think some of the numbers that we're seeing um go down in Monterey is as a direct result of our collaboration with all of the other outside providers, Chomp, that's from transition center, uh, mental health, uh, and a variety of other nonprofits that help and come alongside of the police department. So kudos to all the members of M dot and kudos to Genevieve. Great fielding of questions and uh you did a good job. Thank you.
Um, kind of looping around on on that point that you made about the police and 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 M dot and connecting it to Lorna's comments. Um, I don't know our ability to be able to have a team out on the search all the time for folks. I think that might be a good goal um so that we can make sure that we do stay at that functional zero. Um, but as we work there, um, I think that I'll I'll pose the question of who should be contacted if a community member sees somebody that's in distress, that might be homeless, that might need help and resources. I'm assuming that the the answer to that would be M dot, but I just pass it to staff to make sure that my information is accurate. Yes, I got a head nod from the city manager.
I I think the first call is to the dispatch center to access the police department.
Yeah, let us know where it is and then um, M dot team, cat team will respond.
Perfect. And and just um some some final thoughts here. Esther was speaking to this, I think that there is um and and it is talked about in in the report, but I think there needs to be greater recognition of and conversation around the homelessness prevention piece. How do we stop people from falling into homelessness in the first place, which there's challenges in there in and of themselves? I know that um in our budget for this year, we've set aside funding for um emergency assistance program. And so that could be a strategy in a way that we dig deeper into helping people prove preventing them from falling into homelessness if they're falling on their luck. And that is actually referenced in this key strategy two point one. Um, and then in key strategy two point six, it also talks about the housing first um model. And there's a need to dig deeper into that as well. Um, because we can say all these other things about what homelessness individuals experience, whether it be drug addiction or or alcoholism, whatever it might be. But the thing that makes them homeless is that they're unsheltered. Um, and so by getting to the points of of that um housing first model, I I would love to find a a way of partnering there um deeper. There's also this conversation around who is considered homeless um and the the point in time count. How how accurate is that? I know that the the school districts use um different numbering. Um, and so how do we make sure that we're addressing the full breadth of of what is considered homeless? And then I want to end on a positive. And I remember what the comment was that I was going to say earlier, which is um kudos to the city team. Um, because also in our budget for this year was to bring on a position, and I can't remember the exact title of it. Homeless Navigator um as as part of our city staff. So um us practicing what we preach and and putting our our resources um where where they're needed. So many kudos to to the city staff for for bringing that forward and to my colleagues for supporting that effort. So with that, let's, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, there's one other thing I just think needs to be mentioned. So um, the city has partnered with Community Human Services um with Safe Place to expand um youth shelter. And then um next month, um, Community Human Services is slated to open in Monterey, the Schuman Hard House, which is a shelter for homeless uh women and families. So that'll be adding another, I think, thirty or thirty-four beds.
Make sure you're there, it'll be a good event. All right, with that, let's uh all those in favor? I, any opposed? Sorry, that was kind of weird. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks again, Genevieve and team for coming down. We're the fifth jurisdiction, okay, we'll take it. Sixth, okay, sixth, okay. Ah, they beat us again. Thank you so much for joining us.
We're the first city on the peninsula.
Hey, there we go. Let's just leave it there.
Motion to reconsider.
Uh, all right, number twenty, certify compliance with state law, reassessments, taxes. Pass it off to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Mayor and council. This this item is strategically placed uh after the approval of the two assessment district because it basically is part of the overall acceptance that everything is done to the by the letter of the law. And uh Rafaela, if if you you're sitting there, but but if if council is okay with that, then we we can just go, you can ask questions, go to vote.
You gave a good presentation.
I think I think it was a great public presentation. Rafaela agrees with me, uh.
He's praising you.
Mr. Mayor, if you want to take it out to the public.
Any questions, council? All right, let's go out to the public. The twenty thousand people in the chamber want to speak. Thank you, thank you. All right, do we have anybody online?
No, there are no answers.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the council for deliberation. Do you have any questions on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve uh to adopt the resolution certifying compliance with state law.
A second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? I, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That must be a record.
It is.
Jump to council comments.
Very start, um, I'll just, uh, I've just got one, I want to highlight uh how much fun we all had at uh the July fourth uh celebrations. And again, tremendous amount of uh pride in the community, uh, July fourth, starting with the uh firefighters, uh pancake breakfast, uh fabulous breakfast, great crowd, uh volunteers. Uh, as I said, at the the lawn party, it starts way, way, way before we show up. Uh, many, many months before. And then uh seeing all the volunteers out uh just before the parade is is a great, great fun time. And then the parade, awesome. Um, and the lawn party even more awesomer. And much and much more. So a great day for Monterey to celebrate. And I hope everybody had fun.
That's all. All right, anybody on this side?
Alan. So um this Thursday, Community Human Services will be having our annual um kind of luncheon celebration. Um, just also wanted to um mention the um Pride Parade was really wonderful, great success. It's amazing to see how it's grown over, I don't know, what is it, six years or so? And um getting bigger and bigger and it's uh it's it's really wonderful that Monterey is the host uh to the Pride Pride event. And then finally, um, you know, we heard earlier and and council has heard about this, but um the Presidio Childcare Center is really a concern. And um we had this situation happen, I don't know, maybe five, six years ago, a similar situation where the non the provider of the services left. And uh, and we, you know, staff managed to find um this provider. I don't know where we're at with that, but it would be great, maybe if we could get an update in the Friday uh council update, if there's anything we can do. It it really matters to a lot of people. And then finally, uh, I should have mentioned this during the Parks and Rec update or or celebration of Parks and Rec. But, you know, during COVID, one of the things I heard a lot about was how much people miss the parks, but in particular, how much families missed our summer camps? And how important that is to families and and kids. So it's really great to see um that we've been able to bring those back.
Um, so I have a few updates in regards to Monterey One Water. Um, and just to do a high level um update in regards to the expansion. So we had the WIFI alone approved um from the federal government so that we have the funding available for the for the funding of of the expansion of Pure Water Monterey. Um, at our last board meeting, we um approved the award of um construction contracts um and consultant services. Um, and so we're we're moving forward and we should um expect to see um construction start um over the next few months. And so things are moving well there. I also um attended the board meeting for um California League of Cities. And I should have it up. Um, but the council has already um voted in support of the letter um to fight against that uh legislation. And Hans, you might need to help me, well, or or not, some um with the the legislation for the business roundtable. And that that's the legislation, but the uh the ballot initiative.
Yeah, we know, you know.
Taken a position on that.
Yeah, so i- in short, and I can't remember what the name of it is, it's like taxpayer protection.
Taxpayer Protection and Accountability Act.
And Accountability Act, right. So the the language in in and of itself is a little bit misleading. And I just use this as an opportunity to get the word out of to voters to really um pay attention to who's supporting that legislation and or that that ballot initiative and who's opposing it. Um, there's serious concern in regards to the impact of city services and and local services in general. So um it was a big topic of discussion at our board meeting. I just kind of wanted to reiterate that the council did support the opposition to that initiative and and just to help get the word out about that. So with that, I'll go ahead and pass it to the city manager for report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on Sunday, we sent out uh the first strike team of the season of four firefighters to the Rabbit Fire. Uh, they are coming home today, so that that's good news. Um, Karen pointed out that we are extending the hours uh at the Monterey Sports Center starting July thirty first. Just want to share that with you. The city will be housing an open house about our draft housing uh element and uh scoping plan, and that meeting will uh uh will review the draft E I R. This meeting will be on Monday, August seventh from six to eight thirty P M in the Monterey Conference Center in the Steinbeck Room. So again, we will be hosting an open house. Uh, anyone can come, review the draft housing element and scoping uh for our draft E I R. Again, Monday, August seventh, six thirty to eight thirty. We will also send out postcards to every single resident or household in Monterey to announce that meeting as well, so people can go there uh in order to be uh improving the community engagement also.
Sorry.
And that's all what I have to say for tonight. Thank you so much.
Um, I I I I wanted to uh make a a comment on on Alan's thing, and I appreciate you bringing up the 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 Pride event. Um, I'm a little bit crispy right now, I didn't wear any uh sunscreen, and so my skin is starting to peel. Um, but it was a great event, so I appreciate you bringing that up. And you're absolutely right, every But it was a great event, so I appreciate you bringing that up. And you're absolutely right, every year it it continues to grow. And um that's exactly the direction that we needed to go in, so I appreciate uh all the support for that. Um and with that, we'll go ahead. Uh oh, do we need to do anything as we're going to close session or just adjourn? Adjourn, all right, adjourn. To close.